For the Normal Town Council for Monday, December 20th, 2021, please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comment tonight. We'll go right to the omnibus agenda items considered routine and will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I would like to pull items C, D, G, and H.
So that's C, D, G, and H. Move approval?
Second.
Items considered under the omnibus are approval of the minutes of the work session for the special meeting of December 6th, 2021, and approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of December 6th, 2021, a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of December 15th, 2021, a resolution conditionally approving the 12th addition to Pheasant Ridge subdivision, a resolution to award the bid to the North Booster Station installation to George Gildner Incorporated at a total cost of $304,415. And please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item C is a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for police shooting range facility in us with the city of Bloomington. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The reason I pulled this was because the cost has not increased since 2010, which seems odd because, gosh, that's quite a number of years without increasing costs. My question is, is this because there's been like less number of days that the officers can go train? Are we not doing maintenance out there? Is there something going on that the cost isn't increasing?
Well, Mr. Nord, I don't know that I have good information to share with you. This is just the price that the city of Bloomington is charging the town to use the space.
And we're going to be able to do the same thing that we've been doing for the past 10 years, same number of days, everything's the same?
Well, I believe it's pretty much the same in terms of our expected use. So we appreciate the city keeping the rate the same.
Okay, then I think that's impressive that they can keep the rate the same for that long and, you know, our officers not have to sacrifice anything. So I guess kudos for whoever's managing that. Thank you.
Further on this item, please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. Item D is a resolution conditionally approving the seventh addition to the North Bridge subdivision at the southwest corner of Pipeline and Zbarth Road. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
I had asked if this subdivision or this addition was going to be charged a sanitary sewer tap-on fee, and they're not. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. They're not, the North Bridge subdivision is not located in a tap-on district.
Okay. We've had other developments come through that are not located in the tap-on district, and they had to get charged. And what we were told was because the code said that if you tapped into that sewer, here's a right.
Ms. Reese, let me, let me handle this. Mr. Nord, we're not going to talk about tap-on fees. This council has talked about this multiple meetings. You bring this up at every meeting. There is no interest in the council, on this council, to address the tap-on. If you want to bring this issue up, and this is an issue for the council, this is not an issue for staff, if you want to bring this issue up, bring it to me, bring it to your fellow council members, and if there are enough people that want to bring it forward for consideration, we'll do that. But every time there is a piece of work to be done in this community, we're not going to talk about the tap-on.
I've got a question. Is the tap-on fee, is that something that the council puts forward, or is that something that staff decide upon?
We have to approve it. And, Mr. Nord, you're talking to me, you're not talking to staff.
My question is, I guess, a question for staff, for process.
It is not a question for staff, it is a question for the council.
Okay, then who determines tap-on fees? Is that staff or council?
The council approves changes to tap-on.
Okay, here's the map.
Mr. Nord, we're not talking about this. Do you have anything further on this item?
This property did not get charged.
You are out of order, Mr. Nord.
This one is. I'm questioning why.
You are out of order. We are not having that discussion.
Can I ask one more question that doesn't have to do with that?
Sure.
Okay. If at some point in the future it's determined that an error was made, how is this developer assured that he doesn't have a bill that pops up later?
That's quite a what-if question. I don't know. We can simply tell you that they're not subject to a tap-on fee area. There is no tap-on fee area. So, Mr. Day, how, any, I don't know how to answer that question.
There's no tap-on fee that applies to the property, so...
If at some point in the future it was determined that a fee potentially should have been paid somewhere along the way, some random fee, I guess we would notify the developer and have a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Further on this item, please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item G is a motion to initiate a zoning text amendment pertaining to Section 15.7-2 off-street parking and loading regulations for outdoor dining in required parking areas. Mr. Nord?
I so, I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Does this vote impact at all the uptown parking and people like having dining in some of the outdoor parking spaces?
No, this, this action before the council is the first step. All council is being asked to do is to send this issue to a public process, and it will go to the planning commission.
And will this eventually affect the parking in uptown?
Not on-street parking, if that's what you're asking. This pertains to private property.
Okay, good, because we've all gotten, at least I assume everybody's gotten emails concerned about giving up more of the outdoor parking on the street in uptown. So I just want to make sure that the public and that we're all aware that this has nothing to do with that. We're not moving that forward at all with this vote.
Well, council, I could remind council, before the pandemic, council already adopted a parklet ordinance. That ordinance exists. That does not pertain to this. This item does initiate a public process. We always encourage citizens, if they have any questions or want to learn more, to participate in the process before the planning commission. So if council approves this, the next step is it goes to the planning commission for public comment, public hearing, and public input.
Okay, but this process will not start any discussion about the parklet, correct?
I can't say what people will talk about or not. I can only say what this, I mean, anybody could go to a public hearing process and say something. I can't prohibit people from making a comment. But I can tell you, this item pertains to private property.
All right, but, but we're not authorizing town staff to start any process that will impact parklet.
No, this is not about the parklet. It's already been adopted by council.
Thank you.
Mr. Nord, I would, I'd ask you not to ask questions three times and have staff answer them three times. I think one answer from staff is appropriate and sufficient.
Sure, but she expanded into the parklet multiple times, and I wanted to clarify that was not the case.
Further on this item, please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion is approved. Item H is a motion to initiating a zoning text amendment pertaining to Section 15.7-2 off-street parking and loading regulations, having to do with the location of off-street parking. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
So there's been issues that's come to the council where folks have parked in the grass, and some people have been cited for parking their vehicle in the grass for like an hour or so. So with us adding parking onto the side where they could just, you know, drive into the parking place and then there's grass right in front, I could see this potentially causing more people to think that they could park in the grass. Have you thought about that and how staff will handle that and what type of communication we're going to have with the public if that begins to happen?
Well, I can say I personally haven't thought that much about it, frankly, because we have a number of properties that have these driveway additions already, which is what is cultivating this moving forward to a zoning text amendment. Council may be aware that parking in the grass is prohibited. So whether or not this, this causes more people to park in the grass, I can't imagine that that would be the case. Generally, most people park on their hard-surface driveway, and I would expect that to continue to be the case. So staff, parking enforcement staff and normal police department folks will continue to regulate and will issue tickets and warnings and such as they have, but I don't expect that to grow significantly by adding additional hard-surface parking.
Okay, since the issue that brought, that came before me, the resident was not given a warning, just a ticket while no one was there, the car was out there for just an hour. I had asked if the police could give people a warning before they gave tickets, and your response was that the police would need more money to be able to do that.
Really?
So, yeah, we should pull up that email.
Okay.
And what I don't want is for us to do this. People start parking in there, and our police officers are not giving warnings before they issue a ticket. Because that will, because people are not going to be aware. They're just going to assume they can just back a trailer up in there and their car be parked on the pavement, and I don't want this to backfire. So I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure that our police have been instructed to give warnings before just giving people tickets. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Just on, on this particular topic of requiring the police to give advance notice of enforcing an ordinance, one theory of business law or one standard of business law that, or law in general that stands out for me is that ignorance of the law is no excuse. And I, I had that painful reminder when I called the IRS about a tax client and was told that even though his prior CPA had failed to tell him that he should have sent money in with his extension during a COVID year, he was still liable to the penalties and, and fees that the IRS charged. So I, I don't think it's, it's a requirement of enforcement to educate the public on, on items that are not common practice. I have yet to drive around the city of Normal and see a plethora of cars parked in the yards. So for someone to extrapolate from this, which clearly says a parking pad, that open season on pulling into the grass is now permitted, I fail to see that this is a burden that will occur as a result of passing this. And instead, if you read the packet, this change is coming about in response to measured acceptance of several requests that came before zoning asking for this. And when we realized that hell did not freeze over and that the neighborhoods continued to thrive as residential communities, that there was seen to be no burden in then allowing it to anybody who met the other qualifications. So, appending to this, that advanced notice should also be required, I think, is, is not warranted.
Further on the, Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks. I've got a slightly different take on this, I guess. Citizens wanted us to change some rules so they could put some extra parking in their, front of their house. I think this is a case of responsive government, not an opportunity to scold people for what might be in some hypotheticals. Frankly, another great example of staff trying to be responsive to what our citizens say they want, and, and did it in an efficient manner, and you brought it to us for a vote, and I greatly appreciate it. Thanks, I'm supportive.
Further on the item, please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion is approved. We move to general orders. The first item of business, I will remind you that there were three items pulled off of general orders and will be brought to us in a future meeting, is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal at 1305 South Madison. Motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item A is an ordinance adopting the 2021 International Codes, 2020 National Electric Code, 2021 National Fire Protection Association, Number One, and amending Chapter Six of the Fire Code, Chapter 11, Building Code, and Chapter 17, Misdemeanors of the Municipal Code of the Town of Normal. Motion for approval, please.
Move approval?
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
I'd like to move that we split Chapter 11, the building code, from the rest of us.
Mayor, if I could jump in to ask for one moment, would it be useful for Mr. Trammell to kind of explain what we're recommending here before we start making motions to modify things?
Certainly. Let's, let's hold that. We'll come back to that.
Oh, but the thing is, is I need to give you the reason why I would like to split it, because I have a conflict of interest with that one, so I don't want to be involved in that discussion on just that particular item.
Well, I think Mr. Day, he can just acknowledge that he's voting on everything except the one issue he has a conflict of interest in. We don't have to separate that, do we?
If we're going to call it for one vote, is it your intention then to vote on the other two? Is that your question?
Yes, the others I would like to speak upon.
I'm comfortable with the notion that if he declares what he is recusing himself on, that that be part of the record, and he's not voting on that. But I'm leaving it to you, Mr. Parliamentarian.
We probably do need to split the votes, just in case. Just in case there's a question, we need to know which way the vote would go.
So I'm going to still ask you to hold that. We'll let Mr. Trammell do his presentation, and I'll take your motion to split it, because he's going to talk about everything.
Yeah, that'll be part of the converse, part of the discussion.
It's not, no, it won't be, it'll be part of his, his report.
Mr. Day, is that accurate? Because I don't want to put myself in the spot.
Not the standard discussion is okay.
Okay.
Great. Just, thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Trammell, I think we'll just take a few moments to explain what this is all about. This doesn't come to council that regular. In fact, every few years at the most is when we ask council to update these codes. So, Mr. Trammell, if you could kind of give us the summary, and then we'll move forward with the appropriate options.
Thanks, Mrs. Reese. I'm happy to do that. And my apologies upfront for the amount of paper and the packet associated with this. Just, I wish there was a more efficient way to do this, but I know it's 250-plus pages, so. But again, as Ms. Reese indicated, this is typically is on a three-year cycle. Our, our codes that we adopt historically and for quite some time, and all my time with the town, generally speaking, the town has followed and adopted what are called model codes. We did not, we are currently on what I'll call the 2015 series of codes. We did not adopt the 2018s for a variety of reasons, generally due to the, you know, the state of the economy at the time. Just thought it wasn't the right time to, to take this on. However, things are turning around a little bit, and there's a lot of activity in the community, especially with Rivian. So as, as the report indicates, we are considering seven different international codes, and then also we've bundled together essentially the fire codes. And so as part of this process, town staff, we ordered these codes in back in late summer, and so it takes the inspectors probably several months to go through these codebooks. And essentially what they do is they do a comparison between the addition that we are working on and then identify what we would call significant or major changes to the new additions. And then our charge is to notify our contracting community, and I'll take this time to say that we generally, I think we notified just under 500 different contractors, whether it's designers, general contractors, electrical contractors, mechanical contractors, plumbing contractors, and property managers. And so there's, there's quite a host of people that we invited to offer comment. So when we, when we go through and do these code reviews, we identify what our changes, and a lot of times these changes are grammatical or numerical. I can elaborate on that if, if there's questions about that. But for the most part, we identify what are significant changes, and then historically, the council likes to know those. What, what are those major changes, and then what impact would they have on the building community? And so while there's a lot of paper in front of you, I can say that across these seven building codes, or essentially I codes, including the NEC, the National Electric Code, and then also the Fire Codes, quite honestly, at the end of the day, there aren't that many major changes. The one that the report focuses on is essentially the National Electric Code. It does require what we have considered to be a relatively significant change, and it's basically requiring a master shut-off on a single-family home on a new construction. And that's in part, or three parts essentially. This, this change was driven by the firefighter industry. As first responders, both police and fire, when they, when they show up to an event, one of the first things they'll do is essentially disable the power source to a house for their own safety, depending on what the event might be, in a, in a fire event. If it's a rescue situation, that's different. But as time has marched on, it's becoming more and more popular for folks to support their houses with generators, solar. And then honestly, one of the discussions and one of the relatively new topics to all these codes is what's called energy storage or batteries. And so, you know, before too long, we're going to see people, you know, with energy storage in their, in their garages in the form of batteries, certainly with solar, and then with, with backup generators. So from a firefighter or first responder perspective, if they show up and pull the meter and make the assumption that power is off and we can go in there and start doing our thing, it's not taken into account, is, is a generator on the other end of the house kicked in and giving them power, or is it solar, or is, you know, potentially battery? So first and foremost, it was for firefighter safety. The second thing is, Mr. Behrens sits on our Building Board of Appeals, and he's with Ameren and has been for a long time. He, he had reached out to us early in 2020, asking if the town was going to be going to the 2020 NEC for this very reason. Pretty likely, the utility companies themselves are going to require this. If, if you want to build a new home and you want Ameren or Corn Belt to power your house, they're going to say, this is how it needs to happen. So we're helping them not be the bad guy necessarily in this case, you know, and these are good solid reasons for this. And then the third thing I would say, too, is that the city of Bloomington also, they adopted this 2020 NEC in August of 2020. And so they've been on it. So our contracting base, electrical contractors and even general contractors are, they're doing it now in Bloomington. And as part of this entire process, we did amongst those 500 contractors that we notified and designers, I also took it upon ourselves. We, we met on two or three different occasions with our Home Building Association, and then also with the Realtors Association, explaining these code changes across all the codes. And they recognize, you know, the importance of first responder safety and also acknowledge that, you know, that, that construction in homes is changing with, you know, alternate power sources as backup. And so they were, they were supportive. They understand, they 'd never like to see anything that's going to reduce cost. But on the other hand, they also recognize that it's for, it's for first responder safety and that the fact that our Twin City is actually doing this already, and that it's coming from the utility companies in the future. So, so, big picture, a lot of paper. There's definitely, you know, a lot of changes in, with regard to our municipal code, which is where we codify a bunch of administrative requirements about how we enforce it. You know, among these codes are, is our property maintenance code as well, and that's the one that generally has the most amendments. But that's also probably the smallest code we have. It's 50 or 60 pages. But that's, you know, that's kind of tailored toward our university crowd. And so we do have a lot of local amendments. And quite honestly, and I've been at this code thing for a little while, and, you know, more often than not, a lot of these code changes are, if you go from the 2015 addition to the 2018 or 2021, what used to be Section 107 is now 107.5, and that kind of thing. And there's a lot of clarification to try and make code sections more clear. So, super big picture, you know, quite honestly, with the exception of the NEC requirement for this master shut-off in single-family homes, across the board, there were really what we would call or characterize as pretty, pretty moderate and really not significant changes that would impact the, you know, the building industry. So that, that's super big picture. I'm happy, happy to entertain like particular questions or specific questions.
We'll go into Mr. Nord's previous request. Mr. Nord?
I move that we split Chapter 11, Building Code, from the vote, or from the rest of the vote.
Your reason for it?
I have a conflict.
If I might offer a suggestion?
That's fine.
Could I propose that the motion on the floor be that it is a motion to divide the question, to divide the ordinance to consider separately the question of amending Chapter 11 as set forth in Section Two of the proposed ordinance? This motion would require a second. There is no debate.
Are you?
Sure, I'm fine.
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. So I think what we'll do is we'll take Chapter 11 separately.
Yes, this will result in two separate ordinances.
Mm-hmm. Is there a discussion on Chapter 11?
Is that the one you're going to do first?
You're fine.
He doesn't need to leave.
Pardon? Oh. Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Chapter 11, Building Code is approved, and we'll go back and do the balance of the codes. Did we have a motion for that? We'll, we'll need a motion, because we, we had changed that. Could we have a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on, on the balance of the codes. Mr. Nord?
This gets to the fireworks section that there's been quite a bit of conversation about. In the fireworks section, it's defining, where's the word?
Blank cartridges?
Yes, blank cartridges, as being unlawful to possess and use. And could you please explain what the intent of having that language in there is for?
Sure, I can explain a little bit in terms of what we've heard and what people are concerned about regarding that language. The language that Mr. Nord is referring to, I believe it can be found on, on a couple of different pages of your council packet. It is language pertaining to the Fire Code, and it references fireworks. And I believe you'll find it, I need my glasses.
I think it's page 109.
Page 109 of, of the packet. It's also labeled as page 11-26 of this particular agenda item, where we are recommending that this language be added to Chapter Six, Article Six, which is the Fire Code. It currently exists in Chapter 17. So we are simply proposing that we move it from Chapter 17, which is the misdemeanor section, and moving it into the Fire Code section. It's language that has existed, I believe, since the mid 1980s, and it pertains to fireworks, and the language is state statute. There's been some confusion in the last couple of days, and some interpretation that this language by, by people, I guess, becoming... language by, by people, I guess, becoming aware of its existence, equates to the town prohibiting ceremonial processes, for example, the American Legion, burial rites, ceremonies, and the like, 21-gun salutes, things like that. That is not, in fact, the case. That is not how this language is interpreted, that is not how it's been applied since the 1980s. So staff has said no status quo. What has happened in the past will continue in the future. This is simply moving current language from one location of the code to the other.
Blank cartridges, those are used in more places than just for ceremonial, for like 21-gun salute and things. So even though it's in the code, are you proposing that blank cartridges for other uses are not allowed?
We are proposing no change in how it's been interpreted. Is that helpful?
Well, has it been interpreted that way before?
Mr. Day? To my knowledge, we've never interpreted blank cartridges as, well, I guess, what do you mean by blank cartridges and what are the uses you're talking about?
Well, blank cartridges for, say, firearms. You know, you could use them for ceremonial purposes, for like the American Legion. There's starting pistols, they use blank cartridges. There's blank cartridges that people may have in their possession, because maybe they train hunting dogs, and they need the dogs to get used to the noise. So they will go out and instead of shooting just a gun into the air or into the ground, they'll use blanks for that. This makes that illegal. Also, if we want a film crew to come in, or if a film crew wants to come in and shoot a picture, they can't use blank cartridges, you know? Or, I mean, this is something that, that's what a blank cartridge is. And in the same paragraph, it talks about guns, pistols, toys. So, you know, I don't know, blank cartridge, I'm not really interpreting that anything other than blank cartridge.
Historically, I'm unaware of any of those scenarios generating an ordinance violation. We're simply, as I said, suggesting that how it's been applied in the past be applied in the future, and just moving it from section 1 to, you know, section A to section B. I've had conversations with the mayor, if there's confusion moving forward on something that's been in the code for this many decades, we can suggest some clarification if council desires.
Mr. Nord, not to take away from your time, but I'll just, I've suspended you. The notion, again, we don't do, we've never done that in terms of telling people they can't have ceremonial events. And the points you brought up, I think, were good, with the exception of training hunting dogs in the city by firing blank cartridges. I would have a serious problem with that. Because people, in today's world, people don't hear a sound and say, I wonder if that was a blank cartridge or if somebody's shooting. So within the town, normal, I wouldn't support that, period.
Well, they typically don't do that in town, but they may have it in their possession when they take their dog out to train in the country.
And no one would know, would they?
Well, that still makes it illegal.
Yeah, just to clarify, the ordinance violation, so we would not have written that up as an ordinance violation for fireworks violation, under what is now Article 7, Chapter 17, or soon to be Chapter 6. There are possible other ordinance violations that would apply. You could have a disorderly conduct violation if somebody just walked through uptown shooting blanks and acting like they were shooting people. That would certainly be a disorderly conduct violation, but we wouldn't charge that as a fireworks violation.
Sure, I think everybody's leaping to me, saying you're going to use these in town. Possession makes it illegal as well. So, you know, also, folks that are in the construction trade, you know, if they've got tap cons or putting in the floor, those take 22 blanks. Now we're making that illegal, that if somebody pulls them over, they can add these things on, you know? And what do we do? You know, because this isn't, it's blank cartridge. I would like to see the blank cartridge removed. So I guess I'd like to make a motion that we remove blank cartridge from the text.
And I understand that, and council can react. I just don't want to have this extreme reaction out there that we would be out, you know, addressing construction matters. I just, I think we just need to get focused on the issue rather than generating all these what-ifs that are just not, that's not reality.
And I think, I think Mr. Day was very clear that this is under a fireworks subchapter in the fire code. This is not anywhere else.
So what is the purpose of having the words blank cartridge? What are you trying to prevent?
It's state statute. So I guess I'll defer to Mr. Day.
First, I want to clarify, when we talk about possession, we are, that's not in this language. It's sale, exposed for sale, or use is the language that's in the actual ordinance. So possession's not part of that.
It says the second, the second line, knowingly possess. Shall be unlawful for any person or in partnership corporation to knowingly possess, offer, sell, blah, blah, blah.
You're right, I've got the wrong glasses. It does say that.
Are you going to float an amendment, Mr. Nord?
Yes, I move that we amend the text and strike the word blank cartridges.
Do we have a second on that amendment? Amendment fails for lack of a second. Further on the item, Mr. Nord, you still have some time left.
Sure. I believe this is going to come back and bite the town, because we're putting this out there, and there's folks that have already brought up the issue of how this could be interpreted. So, you know, I don't think this issue is over. I think the town's going to have to explain. But thank you.
I'm just going to go around the table, Ms. Cummings, then Mr. Preston, then Mr. McCarthy.
Yes, I really don't want to, I don't mean to put our legal counsel on the spot, but I am curious, because my understanding, this is verbatim to the state statute, do we have it on hand for the verbatim? Because my thing is, if it's the state statute, I don't want to mess with that, because that supersedes us. That's law precedent. They supersede us. And for us to start messing with the state statute, I have a problem with that.
Well, I think Mr. Day was quite clear that that's the state statute. They did some research today on it. I do know that. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. So, talking about this fireworks section as well, and one of the reasons I did not second Mr. Nord's motion a second ago is that that then kills all conversation except for his specific motion, and I, some other points I wanted to discuss ahead of that. So, on this blank cartridge language, if there is, from everybody I've spoken with, there is no confusion or misunderstanding that the town has not, does not, and is not intending to limit military honor rights or 21-gun salutes, everything I've heard from anybody that I've heard from, and staff reiterated this again at the table this evening, the substance of that aspect is clear, you know, across the board, with at least the constituents that I heard from. Why would we not then clarify that? Why would we not want to just make sure that that is clear, that with the adoption of this, though the language hasn't changed, it brings up an issue that now, you know, is brought to our attention? And why would we not want to clarify that, you know, military honor rights are not included in this prohibition?
So I'll answer that, Mr. Preston. I think it's a fair question, but at the same time, for the fact that for some 40 years, this has never been an issue, it's in the state code, no one sees that going forward as an issue. And the idea that we need to fine-tune things, to my mind, that we need to fine-tune things that are not an issue, and I can't possibly imagine being an issue going forward, having to do with the underlying argument that raised this issue. I mean, we could do this with every ordinance we had. Again, you know, to me, this is a solution looking for a problem. This has been on the books for multiple councils for many, many years, and it's been quite clear, no one has any intention of interfering with American Legion or VFW honor guard rights at all. I mean, who is going to do that?
And so again, I go to my original point. If we're all on the same page with that, why would we leave any room for interpretation for, I mean, as ridiculous as it may be, down the line when all of us are not here anymore and other people are filling these chairs? But why would we not clarify that? I mean, this is making my point, if there is, the town does not and has zero intention of ever trying to limit these military honor rights and 21-gun salutes. I mean, we're not debating substance, it's literally in my mind, just a matter of clarifying that, so that there's no room for interpretation on it, because we're on the same page with it anyway.
Float your amendment.
Does staff have recommendation for how this would best be amended to accomplish what I'm proposing?
Mayor, we can provide some language that if council is interested, we could offer some language to clarify any future confusion, I suppose.
Okay, so what, Mr. Day or Ms., what would you want? If I were to make a motion to accomplish, how best you would see that being clarified? How do I make my motion?
Mayor, do you want me to offer some suggested language, or do you want to be generic? Excuse me. We have, in anticipation of this potentially being an issue this evening, did ask Mr. Day and Mr. Kursagrosa to put together some ideas of what language could eliminate confusion. I do think it, as you and I shared in an earlier conversation, I think it's very important to point out that the language currently exists. And so status quo is, has not affected all these things that Mr. Nord has referenced. And taking action or voting against our proposed changes would mean we still have the status quo. So any changes council might make to the proposed language is simply concerns about how future interpretation could take place. But we can share this. That's some possible way. This was, this, a couple of sentences was prepared immediately prior to coming up here. And something, like I said, in anticipation of council having questions, this is some language that you could consider moving forward.
I would move that we amend to include the additional paragraph, Section 6.4-16.
I think you should read that into the record.
I should read the paragraph into the record, sure. Which states? Let's see, number five. Nothing in this section will be construed to prohibit the use of fireworks by railroads, public utilities, public and private carriers, or other transportation agencies for signal purposes or illumination, or the sale or use of blank cartridges for a show or theater, or for signal or ceremonial purposes in athletic or sport events, or for use by military organizations. So move.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. Cummings.
So, me being who I am, a little, my question goes to, I have a couple of questions. So my first one is, does this still keep us within line with the state statute? Because, again, we answer to somebody, once the state statute is put together. And secondly, if it's a state statute, that means every city is following it. What is the precedence for other cities having done this? Or are we the only one now, all of a sudden, have this bright idea?
Ms. Cummings, I'm not sure I have a good answer to the second question, because I haven't spent time researching what other municipalities are doing or what language they've adopted, since this just came up mostly yesterday, in terms of citizen concerns. I can say, and I'll defer to Mr. Day, but I believe the legal department today scoured things and were able to put this information together, this proposed language, based upon some information they found in state statutes. So I think it would still set us up to be in compliance with the state code. Mr. Day?
Yes, this is consistent with state law, and we've looked at other communities. Some have exceptions like this, some do not. I think we looked at the city of Springfield in particular, has a similar exception in their ordinance.
Mr. McCarthy?
Or did I miss you?
You missed me a while ago. It's all right. I guess I've got lots of thoughts on all this, but I'll be brief and succinct. It seems like we're willing to throw out precedence on a bunch of made-up what-ifs. We don't have precedence in the town for prosecuting anybody for ordinance violations for the made-up scenarios that we've, have been presented tonight. We've got a city attorney and a code guy who can't give us instances of when those things were actually prosecuted under the ordinance. So it seems to me like we're, I'll put it as the mayor did, we're, we've got a solution that we're trying to fit to some made-up problem. I don't like going against precedents personally at ordinance. I particularly don't like doing that from the hip at the table. I don't think that's good ordinance or good policy practice. That's me. I appreciate, second, I appreciate that staff took the initiative, knowing that this was coming to us to do some research. I'm glad it's consistent with state statute. And my only concern by doing this in this manner is by, I'm assuming by picking particular things, that then we set a precedent in law of then therefore there's other things, like dog training cartridges, for instance, that are now going to be specifically against our ordinance, since they're not named specifically as protected classes. I'm assuming that's more of a precedence in law than not. Am I wrong on that?
No, yeah, that's the issue with doing the amendment, is once we are saying now, these are the, whatever, exceptions, in that case, it's road flares and blanks, that we are now, for everything that we don't have an exception with, that leads to a greater interpretation that there is no exception for.
Could you get closer on the microphone, Mr. Day?
There is not going to be an exception for whatever's not going to be contained in those enumerated exceptions.
Right. So for the ones that we haven't thought about tonight, or in the last 24 hours that this became an issue, then we are realistically saying that somebody could be prosecuted if they're not listed in this amendment, because they're not specifically listed, which is always the problem in ordinance or law, when you start protecting individual classes or rationales, that we don't include all the possible ones that we think about. And so I'm just going to caution all my counterparts that, by trying to solve one problem, we are in fact creating others. So I'm not supportive of doing it this way. I think we've got a long history of precedence. I don't know why we're trying to fix a lack of history of a problem. I don't know why we're trying to fix a lack of history of, of a problem with changing statutes, but, uh, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Further?
Thank you. I've been thinking about the fact that this is really pretty noteworthy, that it's the first time in 40 years that somebody apparently found this. So to the person who found this, uh, I guess that's noteworthy. And so I wonder why, why all of a sudden, when somebody read it, for the first time in 40 years, they thought it was offensive in some way? When five years ago, somebody could have read it and, and just applied some common sense? So I've kind of reasoned that perhaps it's more of a sign of where our society is right now. And 10 years from now, 20 years from now, when other people are sitting here, and if we are to make this edit and this clarification, um, it may be indicative of, you know, historically looking back and saying, well, that was the time when society was hyper vigilant about a topic such as this. So I'm inclined to provide more clarification than less. I'm inclined to recognize the changes in our society. But what I don't know, and what could change my inclination, is that, does something like this make it harder for the first responders, and I'm assuming that's probably police and fire, who would be called upon in these situations? Or easier for them to navigate whether or not something is or isn't a violation or is or should or should not be enforced? I don't know if they're in a position to be able to speak to that, or if the staff that's currently up here is, is able to speak to that. But I don't want to do anything that's going to make their job, the people on the front line, I don't want to make their job harder. So I'd like an answer, if possible, to that.
I, I think that's a fair question, but I don't think it's a fair question tonight because they haven't had an opportunity to look at that. Again, we're asking people to make decisions, split, split second decisions. So I think it's a fair question and we can bring that back, but I would certainly not want to put first responders on the spot with a question like, and it's a fair question, but it's a broad based question.
Right.
I, I think they should have time to make consider, consideration on that and not react.
Then I, I don't think I can make a decision because to me, that's, that's a game changer for me. I have, I have two inclinations that I said would lead me to vote in favor of this, but I don't know what I don't know from the first responders. And I think that would be, um, that would weigh heavier than my, my first two points made. So if that's the case, then I would abstain.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Are we required by, by the state to have this statute listed in our municipal code?
No, having it in our municipal code authorizes us to issue ordinance violations rather than criminal offenses under state statute.
Okay. So then we don't even have to have this language, there's, there's no require, there's no requirement for us to have this language verbatim or even at all then?
Well, from the offense side, I honestly, in terms of the general fire code, because these are provisions in the fire code, I don't know that I could answer that off the top of my head as to whether we were required to have that as part of our fire code. But as far as the ordinance violation goes, the state still makes it illegal to have illegal fireworks, and they include the blank cartridge language in theirs. So regardless of what we do here tonight, the question is whether, if we determine there's a violation, it gets written as a state criminal law violation or it gets written as an ordinance violation.
Sure. Which if it's, if it's not in our code, then it's up to the state to interpret it however they want instead of us to interpret it how we want, right? I see Chief saying no.
No, it would be up to our law enforcement to enforce the state code under the criminal, as a criminal act versus an ordinance violation.
So a couple of questions. We've talked about some things, but what about starter pistols? What's the, what's the plan for that? Because I don't see that mentioned in this language.
This is athletics.
Sports, support events?
Yeah.
Okay. What about the cartridges?
And let's, I mean, I don't even think starter pistols are a thing these days. So again, we keep talking about things that aren't really reality right now.
Sure.
But again, I understand the point of if people are confused, maybe we need to address the confusion.
Okay. And then what about the cartridges in construction? Because they look just like 22 and 17 blanks. How are, how are, how are you guys going to handle that whenever you see that?
Like we have for the last 36 years at least.
So we're just not going to be really addressing this? So in this proposed, in this proposed language, we're adding language to blank cartridges for something we say we're not trying to restrict anyway. But the language restricts it. It removes any ability from the public to have it. You have to be dealing with a show, a theater, signal or ceremonial purposes, athletic sports events, or military organizations, but the general public cannot have this.
No, I don't, I don't think those cases. Mr. Nord, all the concerns I, that were brought to my attention this weekend and today fit in this category. Everything that everyone raised that seems concerned that the town's going to be prohibiting is, is identified in this paragraph. So what this is saying is the fireworks language would stand as is, but to eliminate confusion, these are the exceptions to the fireworks language.
Okay. It says blank cartridges for show or theater, or for signal or ceremonial purposes, an athletic or sports event, or for by use by military organization. If you're not a part of one of these groups, these identified groups, you can't have it. We've now, like Mr. McCarthy said, opened up a bigger can of worms by now, making it more specific because now we've told the public, you cannot have it.
So I think the absurd thing to do would be to amend the amendment.
Um, but I would, well, we'll finish this amendment. I mean, honestly, this seems like it's getting such, into such a deep conversation. We should just strike this from what's before us today and bring it back after Ms. Lorenz can have her questions answered. You know, staff, the police can look at this and answer, answer these questions and address this.
I'm going to express my frustration on this because again, this has been going on for 36 to 40 years and has never been an issue. And we've spent the last 20 minutes describing a serious problem that people have with this issue. And, and the notion that all of a sudden tomorrow, because somebody found a loophole, we're going to start enforcing this in a very draconian way, I, I find it completely absurd. I will tell you, I find it completely absurd. Ms. Smith?
Following on your, a microphone. Following up on your comments, um, this issue was first brought to the public on a social media website, um, which, it, well, it's called a communication tool. I think if anything, it muddies the water. I think any questions, the individual who made the post and anyone who commented on could have been clearly corrected if they would have taken the opportunity to place a phone call and speak directly with someone about this. And my frustration is an assumption that I or anyone else sitting up here would in any way interfere with the right of honor that the VFW displays with those salutes to men and women who have served our country. I have in my hallway at home, the photograph of the Marines raising the flag on Iwo Jima, signed by the photographer, because it is a memento my father brought back from the Pacific. And to assume, and to make an accusation that, that the, anyone would interfere with that service, that display of honor, I, I just, I'm just more than sad. And I feel like this has been promoted by some parties who are driving it up as a litmus test and a gotcha moment and a distraction. Because rather than worry about day to day, what keeps us running, what's holds us together, let's find a way to make people angry. And anger never solved anything. Just on principle, I would not amend this. The state statute has stood. We as a municipality fall under the state. I know that there are fireworks displays that annoy citizens because I read those complaints on that same social media site. And to say, let's strike the fireworks ordinance out of our local code, I don't think that's a solution. I think recognizing that in 40 years, this has not been an issue. It isn't an issue because nothing has been done to interfere with the VFW and the Honor Guard. And, and I for one, don't like being tested for what I consider my core values. I would not vote for this amendment.
Further on the amendment, Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I want to reiterate how I started this amendment to begin with because I feel like a lot of the conversation on it has gone in a direction different than my initial reasoning for bringing it up. As I stated earlier, any conversation that I've had with individuals, conversation that I've heard around this table and from staff as well, uh, there is, everybody is on the same page that the town of Normal has not, does not, will not prohibit any, to any extent, this, these 21-gun salute military honor rights. That substance is agreed to. Everybody who has expressed an interest or a concern in this issue has not been confused about that. And that point is important because I feel like that's what a lot of this conversation has gotten into. If we're all on the same page with it, why would we not clarify that to make the case that we all agree with already? That's my point.
Fair enough. Please call the roll. On the amendment.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Abstain.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
No. Will you go back to the overall ordinance? Is there further discussion on that? Mr. Nord?
Um, since we have no intention to restrict blank cartridges from being used, as they have been used for the past 40 years, I think it's absurd for us to include languages or language that says we're going to restrict blank cartridges, since we're not going to enforce it anyway.
Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item nine is a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 to fiscal year 2026, 2027 Community Investment Plan, also referred to as the CIP, a motion from Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This time of year is always exciting, not only because of the holidays, but because we talk to you about capital projects and our investment in the community. And the CIP has a strong history with us. Mr. Hune is going to roll out a new tool that we are very excited about. We think it's very interactive and user friendly for our residents and frankly, anyone interested in learning more about our plan. Council, just as a reminder, the Community Investment Plan identifies our, our proposed capital investment for the next five years. We then incorporate these plans into our proposed budget. It does not mean that what happens tonight is set in stone because council still has a discussion, a lengthy discussion in January to talk about the proposed budget, and you frankly don't adopt the proposed budget until March. So we have plenty of time to continue conversations if council has any questions. I'm going to ask Mr. Hune to go over briefly the proposed CIP as he always does, and then we will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. As was explained, this is, this is kind of a, the first formal action that, that we'll take as a body for the budget process that we're going through right now. As you're well aware, the town's involved in our budget for fiscal year 22, 23, starts in April. We bring this to council to give them a sense of what we're thinking in terms of recommended capital outlay. As you, as you're aware, the, you know, we do this as part of the process for budgeting. It's a fairly complicated animal per se. You know, we're covering a great diverse projects of, you know, from roofs to water systems, to vehicles, to streets, sewers, water mains. So we cover a very diverse project type, cover several fiscal years, the current year and the five out years, and of course, several different funding sources. So we try to encapsulate that in, in this presentation, this information for the, for the budget, for the council. And this year, as, as Ms. Reese mentioned, we, we did make a major evolutionary step in this process. We have a new tool we're going to display to you and, and the public tonight that helps rethink, organize this data in a very meaningful way for people to look at and filter and, and play with to see what's out there, what's, what's being invested, how it's been, what's been invested in the community and so forth. That, that'll come after a few short slides to kind of introduce you to some of the, the capital projects this year. In a nutshell, we have over 400 projects scheduled for the current year and the next five years in the budget. Total cost for the, for the current year and the five years, the six-year window of spending is $157 million. That is a significant increase from the previous year in terms of what we expect for that six-year window. We have divided all those diverse projects into multiple project types. You can see on the screen here that we have transportation, which is the largest piece. And of course, you can read what that describes. Other operating assets, 29.4 million, and that's, others are not a great, not a great category. You can blame me for that one, but it essentially is our vehicle and equipment reserves as well of, as well as other different types of expenditures that don't necessarily fit in other categories. Water distribution, sewer facilities, parks, and stormwater drains, you can all see there, the overall spending projected for the next six years, current year and next five years, and kind of the description of what those projects look like by type. I know it comes up quite often, and we'd like to explain this best we can. We know we're dealing with multiple funding sources, multiple diverse projects. Some funds are restricted, some funds are not. So we wanted to give the council and whoever might be listening, an overview of this information. This first graph that kind of talks about the general fund. So on the very far left side of the screen, revenues from these sources, you can see some of the major revenues that float in the general fund. You're all familiar with, with all those. That goes to the general fund, and the general fund uses a line share of that money for operations, as, as you can imagine, but it also funds a great deal of capital. We have our CIP fund, our capital fund, we have fire station fund, we have roadway fund and vehicle and equipment fund. And these funds are set up as part of the budgetary practice to kind of manage the, the money in, in a kind of clear and, and present way. You can see from what, where those funds go to and then what they're used for, and I won't go through all of those, but you can see there's, you know, road and bridges, sidewalks. We, we do vehicle purchase and equipment. A big one this year is the fire station instruction that we're funding, as well as the Uptown Connector, which is the underpass from north and south of the tracks, and various things, tennis courts, facility needs and so forth. Moving on, we have special revenue funds. These are what we consider, you know, restricted in nature. The revenue source is, is somewhat specific to the fund, and the use of the funds are very specific to the fund itself. Most of that money, as you see, motor fuel tax, that's coming from the state motor fuel tax they share with us. That supports roads and bridge work and sidewalks, basically transportation type expenditures. I won't go through all these. You can see we have money from the feds, the state, developers, and then American Rescue Plan is new this year in terms of money coming to the feds for support in COVID. And you can see where that money has been allocated. We have kind of demonstrated some of that previously to the council. We have recommended those uses in in this capital plan. And as Ms. Reese mentioned, those things can change over time as we get closer to finalizing the budget. But this is kind of our first blush, giving the council idea where those funds are going to be spent. And then finally, we have, of course, utility funds, the water and sewer and stormwater. Again, these are all user fee supported. You pay your water bill, you pay your sewer bill. That goes in to support those operations and those operations have sizable in the H4 capital outlay. As you can imagine, the water system, the sewer system, drainage, creek maintenance and so forth, all talk, all speak to those issues. You can see the water fund has a major capital fund and a very similar fund, the general funds for vehicle and reserve. Again, all that is supported by user fees. Sewer fund, of course, and televising, manhole rehab and lining projects and so forth. And stormwater, of course, is to manage creek maintenance and rainwater. So again, these things, we have a significant diverse portfolio of projects, as I mentioned earlier, and we review these things on a variety of levels depending on what what the project's going to be. Again, we're moving from a tennis court to a sewer system to water system to a roadway, an underpass, a fire station. All these things we evaluate, these are some of the factors we take into account when we're looking at the prioritization of these funds, when it needs to be spent. And what revolves, you can kind of see, these are things that staff consider, depending on their applicability to the actual capital project, on what when to fund it, when it when it's required and at what time in that in that six-year timeframe. I do want to talk briefly about each area in terms of project type. Transportation is probably the largest is the largest single area we spend a lot of capital on. You can see by the nature of this graph, it's about $65 million in total spending. That's across several different funds and several different projects. And I'll show that once we get to the interactive tool. You can see that the biggest expense this year in that area is $24 million for the Uptown Connector Underpass. That's largely funded, as as you're well aware, by the by the feds and state with some local local money also. And then specific street repair and improvements and then in our street resurfacing, almost you know, above $30 million in the next six years. Some of the specific street projects, you'll probably, it will sound familiar to you, look at my notes on that. Of course, for that $16.1 million, $16.2 million of a specific street, we've got West College, we have Savannah Green, Fort Jesse, Adelaide. These are all projects that are that are being integrated into the five-year or six-year budget coming up. General street resurfacing, $14.5 million, again, over the next six years, the current year and the out years. Those processes are are put into place every year. It will it will decide what streets need to be done per priority and review of public works. Bridge culvert repair maintenance, again, $5.3 million. Sidewalk ADA ramp construction, $4.4. And you can see down the line there in terms of transportation spending. Parks and facilities, this is this is one that I kind of want to just mention, an area that we've been able to fund a lot more this budget cycle. If so, you can recall in the previous budget cycles, you looked at what we had in terms of ability to finance and fund public and parks and rec and public facilities. It was it was a little shy. It was just not very light budgeting. This year, we've had some flexibility to add to the budget manner, which is which is very much needed. Obviously, the biggest piece there is $4.9 million for the new fire station, the second fire station we're going to start building. We have some money set aside for building building infrastructure, energy conservation projects that'll be spread over the next five and a half year or six years, based on need and based on overall plan. Pool pool equipment is going to be replaced. This can be from, you know, from actual facilities, the plaster, pumps, filters, these are all very expensive things, the slides all need to be, you know, maintained and 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 repaired. Park improvements. Are just a lot of this Maxwell Park area, as well as some shelter areas and roof areas. Playground, that's going to be Carden Park, Rosa Park Commons, Savannah Green, Underwood Underwood Park, a lot going on in those. And those are all applied to the budget and the appropriate time in terms of useful life of those of those facilities and any kind of maintenance needed. And you can see down the line in terms of what we have roof renewal program, that's for all of our facilities. And those are all scheduled in times when they're going to be required to be replaced and so forth. So a lot goes into this information from our facility planning perspectives to our park and rec programming. This other category, this is kind of a a catch-all for a few things, but it mainly represents our investment in in vehicles and equipment. The lion's share of that is vehicles. And when I say vehicles, I'm talking about the garbage trucks, ambulances, fire trucks, pickup trucks, loaders, dumpsters, everything you can possibly imagine in public works to fire and to police. Equipment, that of course mostly is fire, police and public works equipment. Technology, that's our our investment for the next several years for technology itself. And then we also have some connect transit money in there. That's where some of the ARB money is kind of feeding into this system as well as other, which is also some ARB money in terms of some social program information for behavioral health and as well as other small business aid and so forth. Water, again, you can see the lion's share of the of the water construction or capital outlay relates to water main replacement. There's probably over a dozen projects scheduled, probably more than that, of that $11.6 million. Well maintenance, of course, the College Avenue Extension is a major project. Water relocation, so you can see there's there's quite a bit of funding set aside in the water system to maintain that infrastructure and maintain water quality and water service. Same with sewer collection, a lot of sewer line, that's the major share of what's going on with with our sewer system spending in terms of capital, $8.1 million. And of course, utility improvements, INI, which we refer to as inflow and infiltration, and then more terrorizing of the system itself. So a lot going on in all these areas. The final one is the stormwater. Again, this is all the the maintenance of stormwater as it rains and drainage, creek retention and detention improvements. There's also some great street culvert and some some pump discharge improvement programs. So a lot going on in all those infrastructure areas for water, sewer and stormwater. That that kind of concludes just the overall presentation. Hopefully, it gives the council kind of a feel for, I guess we could kind of categorize as a pretty comprehensive plan in terms of different projects, different spending, different funding sources. One thing that is new this year, and I've got to certainly call out the our IT department for what they've done this year in developing this new system. We're always trying to to make things better, to evolve what we can get out to the to the taxpayer and residents and the public. This what we have, we have a new tool now that will help express this information. We feel it's pretty transparent. We feel it's very organized, this organize this data into into one kind of one dashboard view. So to get to it, it's actually available right now and it's available for anyone who wants to see it. Just go to the town website. It's called GIS-based Community Investment Plan. You click on that. And it brings you to another section of the website, talks about kind of the the press release on what's out there and some information. You click on here and it pulls up the actual dashboard. And this is this is where we're quite proud as a as as a town to provide. As you can see, it has a dashboard approach. I'll point a couple of things out to the council to give you kind of a basic view of how this interacts and how you can interact with it. We can certainly go as deep as you wish, but I think the intent is simply to show you some of the functionality of this product and then turn you loose, so to speak, on looking at the different projects and then returning back to staff with any thoughts you might have in terms of changes or or modifications, as well as this is available to any resident who wants to look at it. People that want to stay informed, what's going on is this is a wonderful tool for that. So immediately, what you see here is is a is a large map of of the town with a lot of different colors on it. You can see in the upper corner here, 403 projects. If you scroll down, they're all here and I'll get into more detail on that layer. You can also scroll down, $157.2 million of spending for the next this current year and that five years. And we have several tabs here, fiscal years, so you can see over the next six years, what we're going to spend. And I think you can actually click on this, get a little bit more space, for 22, for 22, 29.7, for 23, 46.5 and so forth. So that gives you a view of kind of how that $157 million breaks out over the next six years. We also, on this site, we have project type, and I talked about that during the PowerPoint. We talked about facilities, other parks, sewer collections, stormwater, you can see all those there. Fiscal year, you can break that down further and then also by funding source. So in terms of kind of using this data, we can look at the the colors are kind of probably the most stands out, so we'll we'll attack that first. You can see that here's a legend for that. You know, water is blue, sewer collection is green, parks is a kind of a darker green and so forth. Let's say you're you're interested in just kind of seeing what's going on with parks and rec for the next six years. You just click on this and it automatically converts the data into what's going on in terms of spending for parks and rec. As you can see, we have $4.4 million of spending for the next six years, 29 total projects. You can scroll down here and look at them, or you can just simply go on the map and and touch a certain part. If you click on this one here, it'll pull up a narrative box. It doesn't want to look like it used to. So you can see here, it'll talk about what it's a it's a park program, it's a capital funding. This is for Rich East Kelly Basin Trail Connection. It gives a nice description of the project itself in terms of a narrative. If you scroll down further, it'll give kind of project drivers. These are things that staff felt, you know, will drive the project need for the project. If you scroll down further and get to a point where it talks about some of the strategic planning that aligned with. And then probably one of the most valuable things, in my opinion, is a contact name, a number and an email. If you want more information on this of this project, simply contact Ryan at that phone number or that email. Perhaps some other ones to look at here, you can look and you can you can scroll all over the place in this, move it down here. There's separate dog park, that part of the of the city. That parks is always kind of fun places to talk about because everyone kind of can attach some kind of meaning to that area. Again, a nice narrative about what's going on with that area, some improvement, what in terms of strategic plan alignment, parks open to space, a master plan and so forth. And then, of course, Doug Dammery has the contact for that phone number and his address. And we'll just click a little more just to kind of see some some smaller. Right here, there's a small project down here, it's probably a tennis court. Yeah, there's Anderson Tennis Court renovation. It's going to occur next fiscal year in '23, about $335,000. Again, nice narrative of what's going on with that, lighting and so forth. And then we'll scroll down here to get some project drivers that gets improved efficiency, quality of life, maintains improved service. And then, of course, Doug is the contact there. So that that's the that's the kind of the project area. You can you can type any of these, you can go to transportation. You can see $65.8 million, 78 projects. This, of course, is all the roadwork we're doing. You can see that that's the gray, so we're just picking up all the gray ones, transportation. And you click on that to see what's going on. This one, of course, is Savannah Green Road and Alley Improvement, another big project out there, a lot of nice narrative there. Project drivers and the contact is Ryan, of course. Ryan's going to be a pretty busy guy in the next few years in terms of capital projects. If you're interested in just kind of seeing what's going on in a fiscal year, let's say you want to look at what's going to happen next fiscal year only in terms of projects, hit that button, it then retools the map to show what's happening with actual projects across the community. There's 87 projects next fiscal year, $46.5 million. In terms of funding source, you can see that here's the funding source information it shares with you where the money's coming from to support that. So next year, 87 projects, $40 odd million. A lot of it's coming in the underpass, which we'd expect for the underpass. Water fund's going to spend $5 million, roadway fund, 3.5 and so forth. Do you want to see those projects? You can scroll and click on here. Again, you can scroll down and find them this way, which is which is useful. You can see it's good information. You click on that, it just brings you to the same it brings you to the same kind of narrative information as you would if you just clicked on the actual itself. This big green one here, for example, is maybe what INI study. Again, nice description of what's going on with that, what's what we're trying to do, project drivers, strategic plan, and then, of course, Ryan, again, very involved in quite a few things here. And then kind of finally, we'll click off of that. Come down to the funding source. This is this is obviously another area that that's interesting and and is probably more interesting to to the accountants and the budget people that need to to back this up. I think the typical residence just wants to see things get done. They're not really care how it's paid for. They just want to see the work get finished, but we certainly care about that in terms of balancing the budget. So if you want to see what is being spent out of the water fund over that over this period, $26.9 million. You can see that's the spending per fiscal year. And you can actually see the projects here, they're all in blue because that's a nice color, perfect color for the water projects, blue. 70 projects for the year. We can just pick one here real quickly and see that's a main replacement street from College Avenue to Hubby. Again, talking about the the total funds, where it's coming from and some project description there. This big blue one out here, this is one that you shall be familiar with, College Avenue Extension for the water system in that part of the community. Again, nice narrative, long narrative there explaining what's going on. In terms of functionality, the map has some some interesting things to share with you too. And you can slice and dice this however however you want. You can do a search on a on a specific address and it'll take you there on the map and then you can see what's going on around you. You can add a variety of overlays on the map to get different imagery. You can do searches based on just almost like a scroll where you take a rectangle and say, what's in this area? If there's eight projects in that area, it lights up all the ones that are meaningful. So it has a lot of usefulness in terms of locating what's going on within a certain part of the community. Again, it shows a great deal of information from narrative to number of projects to fiscal year to funding source. And we hope that this is this is something very meaningful to the community. In my opinion, it's it's a wonderful tool that's been developed by our our, in fact, our technology folks. And and this is, one thing I said about this also is it will it will eventually fully integrate with our with our budget systems and our financial systems to where they'll it'll talk to each other in terms of projects and and amounts and fiscal year and programming. We we will, assuming acceptance of this and that we and you can make changes, this will eventually be pushed into the proposed budget you'll see in January in terms of funding. Again, this is the town staff's best recommendation on balancing, you know, what we feel is fun, things that could be that there are funds available for in meeting certain needs in terms of various different projects. That that's all I have in terms of of the actual tool. We encourage you to look at this more closely. We encourage you to share it with your your constituents and get their comments back. But we see it as a nice transparent tool that shows more information than than I think is really available from anyone that I've been able to talk to or see in terms of my colleagues or other peers. So I'll without turning back over to Ms. Reese for any further follow-up comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hune. That was, we intended for that to be very high level. If you have time and dig in, you can see all the various projects in in great detail. It is very different than past years where we shared with council basically a spreadsheet, line by line, various projects and investments. The the key would be the capital or community investment plan this year. Again, 403 projects, $157 million comparatively last year. I can't tell you the number of projects, but I can tell you it was $99.9 million over that timeline. So a significant additional investment. So would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Mr. McCarthy, because I've been ignoring you all night.
No, no, no. Smith has been holding her hand up for.
Mr. Preston.
Thank you. And Julie, we want to do questions now, Mayor, because mine's more comment.
Whichever.
All right. I want to start first with a big thank you to Vasu and the team with INT. I think that this new interactive GIS tool is fantastic. And for anybody watching who has any level of interest in this, the amount of detail that you can dive into, the CIP and specific projects, even putting in your address that Andrew went through, this is really great. And this is a great presentation of some great information. So thank you for putting this together. I I just think that the way this is presented is a fantastic service for the community. So I really appreciate that. I would also be remiss if I did not add on to the fact that the information provided and presented here is good information and having almost a 60% increase in in our funding level this year compared to what we did last. Kudos to kudos to staff and the team and the community will benefit from this. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just would like to ask Mr. Hune if he would demonstrate for a second time how someone would get to that particular tool. how someone would get to that particular tool.
You bet. We're gonna. So you go, we're gonna go live on the edge. We're gonna go right from the from the front from web itself.
Open your browser.
Maybe.
It doesn't want to. There it is. All right. So I have the town as a as a as a as a placemark in mind, but yes, you have to get that on your own. But townnormal.org or normal.org. So you can scroll down, actually, on the on the very first page you see, and you can click on this GIS based community plan. And that pulls up another website, another page in our website that talks more about the plan in terms of what the tool is and some narrative. And I do want to say I had the privilege of of providing the information for this because it's it's part of the budget process. But the the IT team really is the one who did all the all the labor and hard work on this. So I need to certainly Vasu Gataraja and all her work on her team on that was did a fantastic job. And then click on this, of course, the hyperlink, and that brings you to the actual tool itself.
Mr. McCarthy.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief and somewhat to echo the comments of of my counterpart, Mr. Preston. I was super psyched to see this tool for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's a quantum change in transparency for the town and the and the budgeting. And I did happen to go look at budgeting information on my former hometown and the one over who is pretty well known for transparent budgeting and none of them have anything remotely close to this available online. So I was just curious to see what other communities are doing that I happen to know well. So the insight this gives us and the community into the future capital spending and where and how and in a visual and so many different ways this slice and dice is a quantum change, as I mentioned. And then second, really, I guess, pointed more at Gataraju and and team is this represents a quantum change in our technical abilities and our technical integration of information. You know, it's my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me talk about smart cities and thumping for smart cities out in the community. But clearly, our teams are working very hard to make Normal a smarter town and more transparent and better for our citizens. So I really appreciate this. And also the echo of increase in capital spending, I think, is is wonderful and appropriate. And I really appreciate where and how it's getting spent from the high level. And really think anytime we have the opportunity to look five years in the future, as I always try to mention during this time of year, is really helpful for us to to look at and have a comment on the priorities of spending. And I think you've done a really good job. Thank you.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. A couple of questions. With this new format, how will we identify changes that have occurred?
From from last year to this year, what do you mean, what changes?
Well, I understand from last year to this year, we can't because it's completely different format. So going forward, say, you know, we're going to be getting the the new road study map back, like the LiDAR map. I assume we're going to be changing priorities based on that information or whatever comes before us. How will somebody transparently see that we had approved this, but here are the changes we made?
Sure, I'll try and answer that and then Mr. Hune can jump in as well. Using the your example of the pavement ratings, the the Pacer study. We don't have the final results of that pavement study yet, so they were not used to develop the recommended street projects this year. They will next year. We anticipate Mr. Otto and his team incorporating some of the Pacer rating analysis into street and pavement prioritization for this time next year in projects. But as if we if we're looking at how will council know what's changed? This will be a tool that we will continue to update and will be able to provide some information as projects wrap up and things like that in terms of change in budget and 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 closing out projects. But the other thing to note is when we come to council and we ask for budget adjustments or we we make changes based at your direction, we will incorporate that into this tool and it will be reconciled with our financial management platform. So the budget will reflect this and if that is useful.
No, that didn't quite answer my question. So the public, how is the public can identify that something has changed? Or the council, you know, when we go into year two, how can we see how priorities have changed from what we approved the prior year?
Well, this this is going to be an ongoing tool. So I'm not sure in terms of looking back, I'm not sure how to answer that question. Mr. Hune, do you have any suggestions?
Well, it sounds like what you're asking is, you know, we're looking at the data set now and the data set in the previous year. So we are kind of in an evolutionary period where we're moved to a whole new data set. So we could we can reconcile what has changed from the previous six year plan to this plan. And we will be able to that much easier going forward with this with this new data. But we we can, we know what we were going to plan on spending for the last six year CIP and what and what we're spending now. But now the public won't necessarily see that per se in this tool.
Yeah, so then if I so if I understand, our CIPs before, they're on a spreadsheet. There's, I don't know, five or six listed on the website. So if somebody wants to see what has changed, they can pull up the old one, pull up the new one and go to the line and see what we've done differently. Is that ability gone when we go to this version?
No, that that bill will be, it will be gone. It's the going forward, you'll be able to see that, the the old the old CIP and the new one that we do next year.
But going forward from the one we're approving this year, so next year, will anybody be able to see any changes that we've made?
Right, so what you're asking, if I can paraphrase, what you're asking is, let's say in 2023, can someone look at the tool at the dashboard and and compare, well, this project is new this year or or council and staff changed this project and it wasn't in two years ago?
Sure, yeah.
That's what you're asking? I I don't think we, I don't think so, but we'll, I'll have to figure that out.
Okay, then another question is, on the old map or on the old one, we had color codes and we had a section where it said proposed projects, not recommended. You know, ones we know that need to get done, but don't have money or whatever reason. We haven't identified it for the next five years. Does this have the ability to track that?
We don't have wish list items. Basically, I would say the past community investment plans included unfunded projects. I think it's probably not fair to say they need to be done. And and using your language, Mr. Nord, I would say they were items that staff considered but was not recommending, either because we didn't have the funding to support it or because other priorities took precedence. So this plan does not include wish list items or unfunded projects. These are projects that we're recommending we move forward in terms of a plan.
Okay, what type of citizen input was involved in creating the priorities for the projects that are on this one now on the CIP today?
Very limited of any. This community investment plan is based on subject matter experts.
Which is?
City engineers, public works directors, finance directors, parks and recreation directors.
Any counsel?
Facilities and management directors.
And council did not have a planning session where we prioritize things like we had done in the past, correct?
I'm not sure. I I can say that is a correct statement. I'm just unaware of any planning processes that council has had where we directly incorporated that into the CIP. We did incorporate things into the budget and maybe maybe subsequent community investment plans.
Okay. And this didn't get piloted. We're still piloting it right now, but we don't have the old version to fall back on, right? So if we find flaws or things like that, we don't have this old version?
Well, it's not piloted, it's live. It's it's a real thing right now. Anybody can look at it. You, the old version still exists on the website, as you pointed out, the past years, because we always have multiple years that people can take a look at.
But we're not using that for this year in case something goes awry and the software doesn't doesn't do what.
That is correct. I'm I'm not, we don't believe anything's going to go awry, but we we would react if something went awry.
Sure, so my thought is this seems to be less transparent because as a council, we are not going to know what has changed when we look at this. We don't even know what projects are on there, which one's critical, which which is important, which ones have been identified that we need to start getting funding for. And, you know, lack of citizen input, you know, that is something that we don't have. So I'm not in favor. And, you know, we spent most of our time talking about the actual technology instead of what our taxpayers expect. You know, what's what's the end result of how their money's being used? You know, they want to see this, that and the other fixed, so.
I will point out just one quick clarification for major projects that are currently in the budget this year. Some that we have discussed include the underpass project and West College Avenue has received a number of conversations this year, this past year with council. Those have had public input, so I guess it just depends on the project in terms of whether or not there's been any public input.
I would also point out that the comprehensive plan underpins a lot of the decision making that went into this.
Bicycle pedestrian plan as well. There's a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So there's a number of tools that we're using, which is what we are referencing in the various projects.
Ms. Smith.
I had asked for some clarification about the action we're taking tonight with this presentation. And this is part of the ongoing budget conversation. So by making citizens aware of this, we will not be adopting a final budget till March of next year. And our work session about operating as well as some components of the capital expenditures takes is scheduled for January.
Correct.
So that is the the venue for citizens to have an opportunity to provide feedback and comment on this. This is not a done deal. This is simply providing the staff recommendations that will come before us to to make a formal vote on. And this gives us the mechanism for reviewing in detail each of these 403 projects before our work session. And the work session is open to the public so that if anyone wishes to make a comment at that time, they are encouraged to do so.
Thank you. Ms. Cummings.
Thank you. But here back in order. So I do have one question because I know we talked about whether the live situation, and I think I brought this up and I just kind of want to bring it back a little bit. As we know, we are a very good town at getting grant monies and things. And I know with we we included the ARPA dollars already. It looks as if we've already included all the grants for that we received for the underpass project. I know I'm not stating what it's actually called because I know we've gone down that road, but that's what it's mostly known by. Are there any other anticipated grants that we did not include but could possibly? And I know probably it would only be between now and I guess what March-ish time that we may know of something else that could impact impact, you know, the financial piece of this.
Right, we have only incorporated known known projects and and funded projects and things like that in terms of grant funded. So if if we're made aware of other grant opportunities and our grant, capital grants are awarded to us, we will then incorporate that into this.
And it would be, it would be able to, because I know that I think that's what I just wanted to clarify. Would we have to wait another fiscal year to then show it even like? I know sometimes we get them and it can be funny. I know, I know, we try to make sure that we're as close as possible to our fiscal year time periods. But if in the case that it doesn't quite work out, do we have to wait till the next one to see it? Or will, and not as much as a carryover, but you know.
Right. Well, if if we learn of something between now and the final budget being printed and proposed to you, we can certainly incorporate that. After the council adopts the budget, if we're made aware of a major project that's received grant dollars and the like, we would come back to council, ask council to amend the budget. And then I guess I'll ask Mr. Hune, would we then, could we then create the 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 tool, could we modify the tool to incorporate that recently approved or newly approved project? I think we could.
Absolutely. I mean, this this tool is meant to mirror what the budget has in it in terms of funding. Excuse me, so it's going to change between now and the work session likely and maybe after the work session, too, based on what we get feedback from from our council members and and what you get back from your constituents. So again, this is this is just a tool to provide what I consider is huge amount of access to the actual information. And then it also ties out to our our budget process to the dollar, you know. So when we when we approve the budget proposed for you in January and then final in in March, this will be updated to reflect those changes.
And then last is more of a comment, and I just want to thank you all for putting this together. I hope that many people will find this very useful for those who always want to know or have questions about what it is we are doing. Certainly, thank you to Ms. Gataraju and her team because I know the time has, you know, certainly been well invested. And I will say this is, I guess, cutting edge for us and will allow us to do so much more. I know this is only the beginning. And I know there's been talks about what we can begin to do and to tapping into how we utilize GIS. And I have to say, too, for somebody like me, the tutorial, the video tutorial, yes, if you are not so inclined, they have a video tutorial for you as well to help you out. But certainly want to thank you all for this and putting this together. And I think it really moves us forward from the digital aspect and the technology aspect. Thank you.
And I'll just add, you know, that we mentioned about the ARPA money. Again, this tool, if you want to see what's being budgeted or what we're proposing for ARPA, 28 projects. Here's all of them down the line if you want to look at those. This is where they're going to be in terms of the community. This is the spending by fiscal year. So it's a very robust tool to answer questions just as that one. And and I encourage the council to get back to us with with changes that they'd like to have done based on what they receive from their constituents and their own and their own opinions on what they probably want to have finished.
Ms. Wrenz.
Thank you. So question first, could we get a copy of that presentation, the couple of those summary slides? Because those were, those were some good slides, so thank you. Then the rest is really just comments. And, you know, I guess I would title this comment, Don't bury the headline. The headline here is, this is a really good tool, exceptional tool and a remarkable step forward in the collection and display of of our major capital projects. So let's not lose sight of that. Having said that, you know, I I heard what our colleague here said in terms of a number of of critiques. And I would expect nothing less than you for that because you're our guy for that, to 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 always find those those avenues of glass half empty. So so thank you for fulfilling your role there. And and, you know, I guess I would say to that, a tool like this is always evolving. And so already we know that, you know, with the with the road rating Pacer study, that will start to get incorporated. I think I'm seeing Vasu nod her head back there. It's just inherent to a tool like this. So to concerns that I think our our colleague, Mr. Nord, raised, I'm going to say that I believe all of them will be addressed over time. And none of them are so critical that we should, you know, throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater because this is an excellent tool. And let's not bury that headline. And the last point I guess I'll make is that, you know, folks at home can really have a lot of fun with this. I just typed in my address and found out that there's two major projects happening in 2024 and 2026. One is green and one is. One is green and one is blue. So that's very good. And so I think that's very educational for citizens to be able to actually type in their neighborhood, their address, and understand what's going on in the next, you know, three to five years. So kudos to the staff and all that made it happen. Thank you.
Further, Mr. Nord?
One question, just to pick a project that's a big dollar amount. Not really that the project is not warranted, but Savannah Green. We've got $3.5 million we're going to use spending on the roads there to fix the roads. Roads are bad, not questioning that. But when I look through the old CIP, I don't see that project listed. So this is an example as to how could the roads be that bad that it's not listed in the CIP for the future? And now it trumps all the other projects that, or it, I guess, trumps all the other projects that were identified before.
Can I answer?
That's an easy one, sure.
It's an easy answer, Mr. Nord, because we didn't have the funding source at that time. So it was, it was, it was an on the horizon project, but we, the CIP identifies funded projects.
The CIP does not. It says proposed but not recommended. And it's, these are, these are, these are ones that we don't have funding for.
We've eliminated that.
So we're missing those.
I'm sorry, I'll also add on to Mayor's comments. Not only did we not have funds dedicated to that project, we just discussed this, I think, last month when we talked about American Rescue Plan Act recommendations at the work session. We indicated that this has come to light as a significant need. Couple of years ago, I think during a budget discussion, Wayne Aldrich mentioned that Public Works was looking at and evaluating the need in Savannah Green. Council, every council member has received numerous emails from individuals, particularly during the last election cycle, that asking us to take a look at this. And when you adopted the budget last time, there were emails asking us to take a look at Savannah Green. We did, we have, and we're recommending it as, as discussed at the work session with the American Rescue Plan Act dollars.
So then going forward, where can the council go to find all these projects that we don't have funding for? That, that somebody's identified? I mean, do you, is there a place for us? Because I see, I, I see this tool as fantastic for the public to use, to see geographically where their tax dollars being spent. I see that as fantastic because that is far, far easier.
All the things that council wants staff to consider, just let me know and I'll keep a list. And we'll consider those and prioritize them based on funding and need.
Well, I would like a list that, that you've been made aware of. Like the public has made complaints about this, that and the other, you know? Because we don't hear all the issues coming in, you know? So that's a list that we need and that I don't see from here. I think that there's a tool for the public, but it's very different than the tool that the decision-maker has to use for, we've got limited dollars. How do we prioritize and figure out where we're going to spend those dollars? So I see there's
Two different tools.
One tool, yes, there's like two different tools.
That doesn't really fit the definition of transparency based on our past conversations, but I certainly hear what you're saying.
Yeah, well, I mean, if this is still being done, because surely staff, you guys have got some list of to-do projects that haven't made it to this yet, you know, so share that with the council.
We're focusing on things that we plan to do.
Right. And I would like to see staff not do that. I think it's a waste of staff time to talk about projects in the future that may need to be done, but we're not realistically able to do. I mean, that, that list could be very large. So I, I'm requesting staff not do that. Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Again, I guess I've got a fundamentally different view of this. So old new system irrespective. Just to kind of refresh everybody in our budgeting process, public and council alike, is that we're approving a plan for one year. And so since I've been on this body, the next year's forecasted projects have always changed the next year. They always have. There's never been a problem. In fact, I think it's good government being responsive to the priorities and assessments that come 12 months later. And so the fact that our CIP has evolved over time, I think is good and responsive government. I think this is bringing this to light, which is a case study in transparency. Is that the year one projects may not look like this when we get through the budget process, to Mr. Hearn's point, based on feedback from us. And next year's projects may look different 12 months from now when we're going through the CIP process again. It thinks it needs to, I think it ought to. Keeping a list of, of potential projects, I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you run around town and try to come up with some huge list of things. I don't know how we do that or why we would ask staff to do that. Certainly major projects, obviously. I'm well aware that staff is focused on. And, but I, I really think this is a great example of, of an evolutionary process that needs to evolve every year to make sure we're staying on the maintenance and the investments in our community. Thanks.
Mr. Nord, I'd caution you to not whisper to fellow council members at the table. That is a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Do you want me to repeat it so we don't have a problem?
Mr., you're out of order.
I'm just asking so we don't have an open meetings violation.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what he said.
I'm just cautioning you. I'm not saying you had an open meeting violation. I'm cautioning you. So I'll wrap up with some comments. This is, this is an incredible tool. And thank you, staff, everyone who was involved in this. And I would say to Ms. Gataraju and her IT department, now that's a dashboard. That is well, well done and increases our transparency multi-times over in terms of people's ability to see what we're trying to do as a community. So a huge commendation to everybody involved in this. And please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The motion is approved. We have no new business or no public comment post-meeting. So before taking motion for adjournment or their comments or concerns. And Ms. Cummings, you're fast with your hand tonight.
Well, I certainly wanted to kind of end on a good note and spread some great cheer. This is one of my favorite times of the year, if you haven't noticed. And so I really do, from the bottom of my heart, want to wish all of you a happy holiday, no matter what you are celebrating during this time. I also ask for those of you to also be mindful of those who might be going through a hard time due to loss of a loved one or just the stress of it all. Because sometimes the holidays can actually bring more stress than joy. But I hope that everyone can find some joy, some laughter, some fun, some time, some downtime, time with family, friends, and even if you are your own best company, enjoy that during this, this holiday season. And I'm wishing you all the best from my heart to yours.
Further, Mr. Nord?
Sure, thank you. I wanted to show this concern, which I wasn't really able to speak much about, but now since I've got my time, I will. This is a fee map, or this is the sanitary sewer tap-on fee map. And there was another development that was coming before us tonight that got pulled off the agenda. Anyway, what I wanted to show you, this is the one that got pulled off. They were going to be charged a fee, okay? Because they've already come to the council before. It's in an area that's identified as no sewer tap-on fee. This one up here is the one we approved tonight, which is identified as an area with no sewer tap-on fee. And they're not being charged a fee. This area over here is one that I've been hounding for a while. It's on North Carrick Road where they did not get charged a sewer tap-on fee. So we've got inconsistency. We've heard from staff that, you know, the map doesn't apply for this developer, but yet for these two up here, it does apply. You know, there's inconsistency. Council is not deciding on who gets charged sanitary sewer tap-on fees. That's the responsibility of the staff. And, you know, if staff want to waive that, they should come to the council to get that approved. And that's not happening. So staff are being able to pick who gets charged and who doesn't get charged. Also on this map, this map is outdated. We annexed in a whole bunch of property here to the west of town, and it's not on the map. You know, this map needs to be updated so it's consistent. We're putting in a new sewer over there, so that area needs to be addressed. Taxpayer dollars, it just needs to be more transparent. So that was my concern. And I do request again that staff will update that map to reflect the borders of the town and where our sanitary sewers are. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. There were some wild inaccuracies in those statements, and I hope staff will take the opportunity to correct them. I also want to take a moment, I guess, in this holiday season and as the year draws to a close, to take a moment and express gratitude. And at the risk of blathering on, I typed out some thoughts so I didn't ramble too long here tonight. So forgive me for reading. To staff and everyone in the town of Normal organization, it's been a very unique and challenging year again, to say the least. I know you know that. You've adapted budgets, you've worked to support residents who needed the most help in our community. You've worked to keep our town well-maintained and safe while adapting to evolving challenges not seen in most of our lifetimes. You've adapted to rapid growth and all the work and challenges that entails what we see going on at Rivian. And through it all, you found ways to stretch the budget and bring tens of millions of dollars of our hard-earned tax dollars back into our community to be reinvested right here at home. I know it's not always easy, but I'm grateful for all you've done to keep Normal a wonderful place that we all love to live. Also to everyone up here, we had some spirited conversations tonight. We didn't all agree about everything. But I want to say thank you for all your work this year. I think we've done good work. I think we continue to do work. And I appreciate that each and every one of us has the best interest of Normal at heart when we're up here representing the citizens. I know we all have more work to do in the coming year, but just for tonight, I just want to say thank you and appreciate everybody for all you do to make Normal a wonderful place. To residents of Normal, I just want to say happy holidays. Like Ms. Cummings, well-stated whatever celebrations you're enjoying. It's an honor to represent and to continue to try to do my best to represent you. And thanks for the trust. And I wish everyone peace and happiness in the holiday season and in the year to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I again feel like I need to at least address the sanitary sewer tap-on fee issue. I feel like we've addressed this countless, countless times. So I'll do it one more time to see if this makes a difference. But Mr. Nord, we have had numerous conversations at council meetings. We've had numerous, many, many email exchanges about this. In regard to the map and sanitary sewer tap-on fees, first of all, staff does not pick and choose who it applies to. And there are no inconsistencies, none. The sanitary sewer tap-on fees apply when council has adopted an ordinance identifying a sanitary sewer tap-on district and when we have an annexation agreement that identifies what a developer is going to pay. Not complicated. Staff does not pick and choose. Staff reads the ordinances that have been adopted by council. Staff also reads and applies annexation agreements. Now, if the map you have in your hand needs to be amended because it doesn't show the 360 acres that have recently been annexed, we can, we can make sure the map on the town's website shows our corporate boundaries that does not impact or apply or have any impact at all on sanitary sewer tap-on fees. That would be a corporate limit boundary map. So again, staff does not pick and choose. Staff does not, there's no inconsistency on how sanitary sewer tap-on fees have been applied. And I just don't know why we continue to have this, this conversation time and time again. Because I've explained it. There's annexation agreements and there's ordinances. That's, that's where it's at. The, the other thing, not related to sanitary sewer tap-on fees, but in fact, I wanted to share with council regarding the holidays, kind of tying in with Ms. Cummings' comments about the holidays. Our cultural arts director reminded me today that we have a very busy week at the Normal Theater showing holiday movies. And although we may not have an actual white snowy Christmas this week, we do have a great movie related to White Christmas. So we do encourage everyone to take advantage this week of the great movie offerings at the Normal Theater. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm glad you addressed this, the tap-on fee issue, Ms. Reese, because I think we're just going to have to come to know Mr. Nord as like, that's his thing. Because, not that that makes it right, because you're making something out of, out of nothing. But I know you've got a history of feeling wronged by the application of fees. And so this is just going to be your thing. And so, you know, we can, we can all expect that every time you, we do something with, you know, Final Platte, what have you, we're going to hear that question from you. I think for the record, Ms. Reese said about as clearly as possible what, what, you know, is, is really real. And, you know, I, with your map there all noted out, I, I see in your future a Facebook post. And, and so, you know, that's just going to be you and we're not going to change you. And you are our devil's advocate and you find things wrong with even a really good dashboard. That's just you. And, you know, you play your role. So, but I hope for the rest of us that, especially as we sort of look at the year in whole, going into the next year, that we can just always kind of try to know that this is, you know, this is, well, that we should know to keep the larger picture in mind and allow common sense to rule, allow facts to rule, and, and just, just kind of take into consideration where Mr. Nord may be coming from on sewer tap-on fees. I think you just beat this drum because you want to beat the drum. And I'll just leave it at that. The other point I really wanted to make is a point that I made last week. And maybe this will become my issue that I start beating a drum about. And that is housing and the lack thereof in this community. And it's a, it's because of a really good problem. We've got growth in this community. And, but it could become a real big problem in a negative sort of way if some things unfold. And, and it's, I kind of see it at two tiers. There's the market level where we anecdotally hear about people coming to town for a job but can't find an apartment any closer than Morton. You know, that's missed opportunity. So, you know, that's at the market level. And then some conversations that I'm involved in during my day job, you know, I hear of some pretty significant statistics coming down the pike in terms of evictions and move-out judgments as a result of the lifting of the moratorium. And that is going to, I think, I heard one social service person say, there's just nowhere to put people. And so we're going to have to look at all levels of housing. No one thing is going to fix this. I think a week ago I said something about, you know, could ARPA funds? That's not going to fix this. At best, it'll be a Band-Aid. But it could be a crucial Band-Aid for a temporary solution. I'd like to advocate, and this will become the drum that I beat, I'd like to advocate for a collaborative approach in the year I'd like to advocate for a collaborative approach in the year 2022 on housing at all levels, market and affordable, to, to get through this growth that we are in and to bring all the key stakeholders, whether that be a significant employer, whether that be schools, whether that be public transit, whether that be the different government bodies, probably all of them, to really tackle this problem and get our arms around it. I feel really, really passionate about this.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Bucket.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye, we are adjourned.
He's talking to me.
I know. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm going to leave it like.